Good evening, I'd like to call the Maricopa City Council regular meeting to order Tuesday, October 30th, 2012. With that, we'll go ahead and have an invocation provided by Dallas Paulson. If you'd all stand, please.
Let's go the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to ask you to put a special blessing on each and every person that's been in the storm area and will be in the storm area that have lost everything. Put your armor on them and give them support as they try to rebuild their lives. Be with all the first responders as they put their life in danger as they go out to help others. Closer to home, we ask that you be with our police and our fire department as they protect us in our city of Maricopa, that you will have armor around each and every one of those as they go out and put their lives in danger. We ask that you be with this council tonight, that they decide certain things that have a big impact on our city and our way of life, that you will be with each and every one of them as they make their decisions. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Dallas. If you'd please remain standing. We're going to have a posting of the colors by Maricopa High School ROTC, and then we'll have a national anthem rendition performed by Anapamias, after which we will say the pledge.
Introduce. Colors. Code are: Hope. Left turn. March. Freezing. Arms.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you.
Order. Arms.
Lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right turn. March.
You may be seated. Thank you very much. Thank you to the color guard. I'd like to move on to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussie.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Potter.
Present.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Great. Thank you very much for your patience, we've had a lot going on tonight, so we're going to get to as much as we possibly can here, very quickly. Moving right along on the Proclamations, Acknowledgements, and Awards, we have a few proclamations to do this evening. I will come down here, and we will start with a proclamation to the veterans. Come on up. I'm going to go ahead and present this to the adjutant for the American Legion, Jay Robinson. Proclamation we have this evening is like this. It says, "Whereas throughout our history, America has been protected by our brave members of the United States Armed Forces who have answered the call to serve our nation in times of peace and in war. Whereas veterans have paid the price by leaving their families and their communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas the residents of the city of Maricopa have great admiration and the utmost appreciation for all the local men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. Whereas the city of Maricopa benefits in quality of community and sense of pride by having a strong contingent of both active service members and dedicated veterans residing among all of us, and whereas on Veterans Day, we honor the heroes of both the present and the past by supporting our soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, and Coast Guardsmen. Now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the city of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the city of Maricopa's support for veterans on this upcoming Veterans Day, November 11th, 2012. I urge the residents of Maricopa to display our community pride by supporting all Maricopa veterans throughout the year for their service and sacrifice in order to protect and preserve the freedoms we enjoy each day in Maricopa and across this great nation."
Mr. Mayor, tonight we are also performing Operation Welcome Home, and Councilwoman Gussie had a couple of words to talk about this special Operation Welcome Home, we're honoring our veterans organizations.
As a senior in high school, I chose to enlist in the Air Force. Because my 18th birthday fell after graduation, my parents had to sign a consent for me to enlist. I then arranged a meeting between my recruiter and my father. They sat there chatting and pointing out, my dad was pointing out, all the reasons why his daughter should not enlist. My dad talked to the recruiter for hours and mentioned the fact that military men were mistreated and disrespected when he first arrived in this country in the late 60s. I had forgotten this conversation until about a year ago, when I sat down with a few veterans discussing Operation Welcome Home. Two Vietnam-era veterans were in attendance for this meeting. They told me about the treatment they had received when they returned to the U.S. They were spit on and called horrible names. Mind you, this had been almost 40 years later, but I can still see the pain in their faces from this mistreatment. Veterans are very receptive and positive about Operation Welcome Home. They want to make sure people are aware of this great sacrifice, thank our veterans for their service, and welcome them home. Operation Welcome Home is not only for the individual veteran being honored, but this is for all the veterans that never made it home. For all the veterans, and for all those veterans that have chosen and made Maricopa their home. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, our first veterans organization that we're going to award appreciation of award is the Tracy P. McPherson VFW Post 12043. I'm going to read a short bio on VFW Post. The mission is to honor the dead by helping the living through veteran service, community service, national security, and strong national defense. The Tracy P. McPherson VFW Post 12043 was chartered in 2005 and has grown to more than 50 members. The membership is involved in support of many local functions, including visits to local schools, supporting local veterans as they navigate through the VA system, Buddy Pops Day. Post 12043 has also adopted a medical unit at Luke Air Force Base and supports their members. And so to accept this award is the commander of the post, Don Rostron.
Don, watch him up.
Don, how are you?
Thank you, sir.
We even framed it for you.
Yes, sir.
Not too shabby.
Right, right. Thanks, folks, for all your support.
Don, would you stand right over here for us? Don't go away.
Okay.
Our next honoree, our next honoree will be the American Legion, the Maricopa American Legion Bernie G. Kraus Post 133. The, let's see here, the Maricopa American Legion Post 133 was chartered on February 24th, 2009, with 22 charter members. Since then, it has grown to more than 75 members. In 2012, Post 133 requested and was granted by the National American Legion to officially change its name to the American, to the Maricopa American Legion Bernie G. Kraus Post 133, honoring one of the driving forces behind the creation of the post. The Maricopa American Legion Post 133 is currently active in supporting local veterans, volunteering for various local events, sponsoring two teams for the American Legion baseball, sponsoring boy state and local Boy Scout troops. And accepting for the, the American Legion Post 133 is Commander Rory LaCombe.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Come on up. Want a picture of us here? Please.
And, Mr. Mayor, our third veterans organization we are honoring is the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 133. The American Legion Auxiliary Unit 133 was chartered on October 27th, 2010, with 11 charter members. In the spirit of service, not self, the mission of the American Legion Auxiliary is to support the American Legion and to honor the sacrifices of those who have served by enhancing the lives of our veterans, military, and their families. The American Legion Auxiliary 133 is still in its infancy, but is growing through volunteering with and supporting of local organizations like the Girl Scouts, FOR of Maricopa, and veterans and their families. Many of the members are spouses of members of the American, Maricopa American Legion Bernie G. Kraus Post 133, and as such, support and assist Post 133 in their endeavors for veterans. The American Legion Auxiliary Unit 133 was, started with 11 members and has grown to 15 members. And the president of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit is Julia Gussie, Councilwoman Julia Gussie.
Counsel, if you'd come down, please, we'd love to take pictures with all of you. I don't know if we can all scoot in this way, or if we need to be behind?
Yeah.
I'll stand behind here, I seem to look over people really well.
There you go.
In there.
And, Mr. Mayor, I want you to, to join you and everyone, to all the Maricopa veterans past and present, to wish them all a wonderful welcome home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm done, sir. Can I just, to be able to? Come on up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I didn't see it yet. What can the events?
Ah, yes. Thank you very much, and again, welcome home. Sorry, I'm a big baby when it comes to veterans, I have many veterans in my family, and makes me think about them. So, maybe I need to go through a training course or something to toughen up, but I appreciate your help in there. I just wanted to announce a few events, also, the Veterans Day events coming up here, November 12th, Legacy Traditional School, at 8:30 in the morning to 10:00 a.m. will be a free pancake breakfast, you're all invited. At 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. is a bike parade, and at 10:00 to 10:30 is a ceremony honoring the veterans. Then at the Veterans Center, there will be, at 8:00 a.m. sharp, a flag raising ceremony, and then at 8:15 to 8:45 will be a presentation. So, you have your choice of events that, that morning, I hope you get to do all of it if possible, so, we appreciate it. With that, here, we're going to move into the report from the mayor, just have a few quick things. Couple of things here, the first is, we have a Relay for Life of Maricopa, if you haven't seen that particular flyer out and about. The kickoff event from Desert Stars Gymnastics is at 12501 North Murphy Road, it's going to be held this Saturday, November 3rd, and it will be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. If you would like more information, you can either call 602-460-9893, or go to email maricoparelay@gmail.com. And I believe that's relayforlife@backslash.org, Maricopa AZ, so that's probably the website. Anyways, that's the Relay for Life, Maricopa, if you'd like to participate in that. Also, in the report from the mayor, we have the For Our City organization, you've probably seen some of these out and about, they're colored, bright yellow or bright orange, they're in Spanish and English. We're having a community Thanksgiving dinner on November 22nd at Our Lady of Grace Catholic Church. There's information on here on these flyers to RSVP. If you need a Thanksgiving dinner, because there's no place else to go, then come hang out with us. If you don't need it and want to come hang out with us anyways, we'd love to have you. And we're going to have a youth football game at the Meadows, a turkey bowl, so if you need a good tackle, please come on over, we'd love to have you. But please RSVP, and this is a great, wonderful opportunity, and we need lots of help, so, thank you. I believe that's it for the mayor's report. We had something else, didn't we? What was, there was one other thing.
Boo. Did that spark your memory?
Boo, that boo.
Boo.
Gotcha. It is Halloween, after all. Too many council meetings this month. Come on up, Jennifer. We have some exciting participation statistics to run through.
Would you like to come down, Mr. Mayor, and handle?
Oh, yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This year, again, this is our sixth annual Mystery Mansion Mayhem, and what that event is, for those of you that may not know, is where residents of Maricopa go ahead and decorate their houses, whether it be cute, scary, gory, fun, and each year, we send out judges. This year, we had 22 that went out to judge the homes on things like creativity, lighting, theme, and last night, we went ahead and we chose the winners. So, we wanted to go ahead and announce them here at the city council meeting, and also the winners have been posted on the website, along with a map of all of the houses. So, we want to thank all of the participants. There were actually 27 this year, compared to 10 last year, so, big jump up. So, we had a great time going out and judging, I want to thank some of the public, PRL members, and of course, our wonderful youth council, and let me tell you, we did have a couple frights, and actually, second place, I'll let you know about. But, third place, I don't think they're here, but it was Dee Evans was the third-place winner. Second, and this was the house that definitely gave us the most scare, I've got to tell you, one of our Parks and Rec staff members actually screamed at the top of her lungs and ran, I've never seen someone run that fast. It was awesome. So, second place is Pete and Jennifer Steckenrider. Come on up, they're here.
Congratulations. Awesome. Thank you so much. Thanks. Come on, stand right over here.
Just to let you know, third place is $50 worth of gift certificates to some of the local restaurants here in Maricopa. Second place is $100, and with our first place, and this was a pirate-themed house, which was very off, very awesome, and also, they had some spiders, which I was goofy enough to step on one, it jumps out, and I scream like a baby. So, had a good time last night, and the winners for first place is Rich and Linda Huggins.
Congratulations. Come up here and have a picture. Congrats, you guys.
One more, just for Price and her buddy.
Yeah, I'm going to come trick-or-treating him off.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. And that concludes our report from the mayor. Thank you again for all the participants in this year's competition, we really appreciate it, it's getting better every year. Turn of time over to the city manager for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. 'Tis the season for events, so I'd like to just let the public know about a couple things. First of all, on Saturday, this Saturday, the 3rd, from 2:00 to 7:00, Maricopa is hosting our first GaIN, G-A-I-N, event, where residents throughout the community get together as part of a statewide crime prevention program. Members of the police and fire departments, and several of the council members will be out in the neighborhoods throughout the evening. If you are interested in getting your neighborhood involved, please email block.watch@maricopa-az.gov. Another event that we're excited to announce is the Fire Station 575, the Chief Don Pierce Fire Station, groundbreaking, and that is going to be Thursday, November 8th, at 8:30 a.m. on Edison at 45695 West Edison Road, and the community is invited to join us for this event and to welcome this great addition to the Heritage District and to our community, this permanent fire station. The next event I wanted to announce is the Sixth Annual Maricopa Economic Development Department's Economic Outlook Event, and that is on December 6th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Southern Dunes Golf Club, and attendees at this event will receive an update on city projects, enjoy a presentation on how spending habits impact their community and the local economy, from our esteemed guest speaker, Kimber Lanning, founder of the Local First, which is a nonprofit organization working to strengthen communities and local economies through supporting, maintaining, and celebrating locally-owned businesses throughout the state of Arizona. Space is limited for this, so if you're interested, please register via online at the city's website, you can go to the city's website for that. And then, in the spirit of Halloween, I would like to invite Jennifer back up, because we had a pumpkin carving contest in our city, and she's going to show you some of the spooky results, and, and to talk about the winners, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council again. Community services put on the Mystery Mansion Mayhem, while the library did something for some of our families here in Maricopa, and what they did was, we had a pumpkin decorating contest, we actually had pumpkins that were donated from BASH's, so that was wonderful, thank you to BASH's for the donations. There were 45 entries in this as well, so, the first one here is a very cute bat from the Long family, so we just wanted you to see that, very creative. Okay, next up, I think Ruben's up, oh, there we go. Okay, here we go. From the Dunesbury family, we have a Frankenstein, so it's very interesting how these were small orange pumpkins, and look what they've done. Okay, next up. This is from the Beckstead family, and if you guys have been watching television, you know the lovely M&amp;M's, there's always the red one and the yellow one, and the yellow one's the kind of goofy one, and the red one's supposed to be the smart one, but that is an awesome way, so, at least he won't get eaten, I don't think, this Halloween, so that's probably really good. Next up is the Tin Man, and this was from the Kaplan family, so those of you that like The Wizard of Oz, you guys know the Tin Man, and he actually has his little heart right there, so, that was very awesome as well. Okay, and here we go. This was from the Arona family, this is the mummy, and I'm not sure if you can see, but the mummy is eating some colored goldfish, so apparently, mummies like goldfish, it's important. Okay, and I think this is our last one, this is the Singa family, which the witch with feet, so, very creative, this was wonderful, it was done by kids and their families, and again, we had 45 that were entered, and we picked the top six, and it was people that came into the library to judge, so, very exciting, and we just, again, want to thank all of our Maricopa families for definitely getting Maricopa in the Halloween spirit, so we hope everyone is safe and sound and has a great Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dallas. No one ever said council meetings were boring, come on, this is fun. Thank you very much. With that, here, we'll move on to the call to the public. The time is now open, if you wish to address the council. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the call to the public, and move on to the minutes. Can I have an approval for the minutes, please?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to the public hearings portion. We'll go ahead and start with 8.1.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I wanted to open up the public hearing for the Section 5311 application that is submitted to Arizona Department of Transportation. As part of that application process, we are required to host a public meeting for any comments from the general public. There are also letters that are sent out to all local providers in the area that could possibly provide the service, or either are already providing that service now, and just looking for any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, for anyone who wishes to comment on 8.1, 8.1 only. Anyone? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on 8.1, and move to open the public hearing on 8.2. Mayor and City Council shall hear a public comment regarding proposed text amendment for the city of Maricopa zoning ordinance creating a new chapter, Article 36, for wireless communication facilities. Anyone wish to speak on item 8.2? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for 8.2, and we will move on then to the consent agenda. Three items on the consent agenda, can I have a motion for approval, please?
Sure.
Have a second? Motion and second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, carries unanimously. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item 10.1, the mayor and city councils shall discuss and possibly take action on appointing one citizen to fill the vacancy on the Industrial Development Authority Board. So, item is for discussion and action. Now, I did receive a speaker card from you, John, not on this one, on 10.7, correct, is what you wanted on? Okay, so, 10.7, I'll come back to you on that, then. With that, here, we just have one applicant for this position, and is there any discussion on this? Questions? Danielle, do you have something? Nope. With that, I think I accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
So, have a move? Yes, it is.
Rachel LaFaul. So, that's our applicant, Rachel LaFaul.
Is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here? Rachel LaFaul, right there. Awesome. So, we have her present, and we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Rachel, thank you very much for participating. Moving on to item 10.2, Mayor and City Council shall discuss and possibly take action to approve a contract amendment with Core Construction for a construction manager at risk, construction services, in an amount not to exceed $17,841,179 for the Multi-Gen Aquatic Facility project. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is for the Multi-Gen Aquatic Center. This is a guaranteed maximum price, which is similar to the two recent contracts that we've approved the last couple of council meetings. The difference with this one is, this is a CM-at-risk delivery method versus the last two are design-build, not much difference, other than you have two contracts versus one, but it is the same, same structuring with respect to the construction, which is a guaranteed maximum price, which you have before you. And the only thing to highlight on this is the fact that this is for full build-out of the facility, so, with that, any questions? I have Seth Beer with Core Construction here, came all this way, so, thought I'd point him out, so.
Great, thank you very much for coming. Questions, council, for this item?
Move to approve 10.2.
I know we've talked about it at length.
Move to approve 10.2.
We have a motion to approve.
Second?
Second. Motion and second, any further discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. 10.3, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona declaring as a public record that the certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Article 36 Wireless Telecommunication Facility, the city of Maricopa zoning code, related to the establishment of general guidelines for the installation of wireless communication towers and antennas. Basically, amends the code. It's all you, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, thank you very much, pleasure to be before you. Once again, this item, as well as the following item on your agenda, are the documents necessary to adopt the text amendment, which you held a public hearing this evening, as well as on October 2nd.
towers and antennas. Basically amends the code. That's all you, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you very much. Pleasure to be before you. Once again, this item, as well as the following item on your agenda, are the documents necessary to adopt the text amendment, which you held a public hearing this evening, as well as on October 2nd, to discuss as well. That said, staff has not received any additional public comment since, really, it's been about four public hearings at this point, including Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend unanimous approval by the city council. Staff is prepared to walk through the presentation, if you wish, or discuss the details of the Article 36 Wireless Communication/Telecommunications.
It's basically the same presentation we went over last time, correct?
That's correct. Slide updates, no new information.
So, this is not the first time it's been gone through, obviously.
That's exactly correct. So, this item is the resolution. The following item would be the actual ordinance to adopt. Staff, again, is recommending approval. Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
With that, I'll ask council if they wanna go through the presentation?
I move approval.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. With that, 10.4 is the ordinance, basically facilitating the same, and we need a roll call vote if we're going to move to this. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Oh, we need, so let me go ahead and read it. In ordinance of the Mayor and City Council for the City of Maricopa, Arizona adopting Article 36 Wireless Telecommunications Facilities by reference as Article 36 of the Maricopa City zoning code and providing for severability and the effective date thereof...
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Councilmember Potter?
Aye.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 10.5. The Mayor and City Council shall discuss and possibly take action on the purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions between the City of Maricopa and Bolin Plaza LLC, a Nevada Limited Liability Company. I'm not gonna go on from there. You can read it in the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular purchase is in relation to the regional park and multi-gen projects. It is needed for the Collector Road, the finger that forks off from Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. It's needed for some additional right-of-way to do the improvements to Bolin Road. And then also, the third piece to this is for acquisition for the drainage improvement for the channel that runs along 347. So, it's after a long await, and we finally got this negotiated, and we're able to nail this down in time for the project. So, any questions?
Just again, for the record, it's for the drainage and easements for the utilities, correct?
It's for right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
For the two roadways, and then we're considering it right-of-way for the drainage channel along 347 as well. But it will have, it will have some utilities, some dry utilities in it. You know, we're gonna be undergrounding the overhead electric lines that are existing today, and then, but the main reason for it is, is the drainage channel, to improve that channel as part of the floodplain solution for the project.
For the project. Okay.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion?
Second?
And a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10.6. Mayor and City Council shall hear a presentation regarding the Development Services Department's implementation plan, which resulted from the audit conducted by Zucker Systems, and consider contingency transfer requests for the necessary current fiscal year purchases that will advance the plan's identified priorities. The request is in approximately $200,000 from the general fund, non-departmental contingency. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I hope I don't become unpopular by making up for all the time you just saved, but I am gonna go through a presentation. I'm actually, a little bit of a joke, but I'm really pleased to be here tonight and report to you where we've gotten on this implementation plan and what we feel we need to do to keep advancing it. So, with that, I'm gonna walk through this and look forward to any questions. I wanna bring you all, as well as all the public, obviously, up to speed on the process. As you know, we had a consultant, Zucker Systems, come in and do a review. The term audit was thrown out there, but it was really a review of all departmental operations in the Development Services Department in the City of Maricopa. We approved a contract March 6th and moved forward very rapidly. They came out in April and May, and a report was brought before council in June. Council heard and accepted that report. And then, our drive thereafter was to immediately begin launching and getting our implementation plan put in place. Now that they've given us 121 recommendations, how do we get it done? What do we get done? What's the process? What resources do we need? And it was a big task. It's been a big task working on this. So, the internal implementation plan creation, right off the bat, staff took any priority one tasks that didn't incur any cost to the city, other than some staff time and effort, those were immediately launched, and things that they began working on right away. Simple things like websites and correct on forms and, you know, verifying processes and looking at staff meetings, because, and we'll get into that, there were some recommendations on how to enhance those. So, tonight, this is an update, as well as, as you mentioned, and is in the item, items that are gonna require a fiscal impact for this current fiscal year. We're gonna let you know what we can do with that and why we're requesting it, and then give you a little bit of insight into what we'd be looking at in future fiscal years. So, the structure of the implementation plan, and if you saw the attachments in the agenda item, there's a lengthy spreadsheet, and also a summary memo to give everyone, you know, wanting to read through it, a kind of a high-level overview. But the report recommended, above all else, that we needed to agree upon a timetable and a work program between myself and the Development Services Director, that we needed cost estimates, figure out how we're gonna finance some of the things needed, and then also come back and confirm before Mayor and Council. So, here we are tonight. And the things that you'll see in italics in this presentation are directly from the report, and this is actually a comment that Zucker made. They said, you know, the department already has many important tasks. These 121 recommendations may be overwhelming, but if you take it and you start ticking them off item by item, it can happen pretty quickly. So, the development of the plan, what we did is, we set a meeting with, you know, obviously, the Development Services Department has many different divisions, building safety, planning, engineering, transportation, capital improvement. We had a meeting with the Development Services Director, myself, and the manager of each of those divisions, one per week. These lasted anywhere from an hour to three hours each time, walking through the items that impacted their department or their division, so that they could give us input, insight, help us understand how best to address some of the recommendations and issues, and start formulating the plan. Then we held amongst all of this time, some of the recommendations really talked about bringing the staff together. We held a department-wide staff meeting. I wanted to have the opportunity to get in front of the entire team and get input. How do you feel about the plan? Obviously, there's always gonna be questions of morale and people being uncertain as to what's going on when you do an extensive review of a department. So, we did some team-building exercises. We brought in some staff from different departments to answer questions they had, and I felt, at least, that it was a very positive meeting, and we're going to be doing another one here in about another month or so. Held additional discussions on updates. So, not only did we launch the plan and meet with every department head, we've had two additional meetings where we sat down with the group and said, okay, where are we at on the full plan, and walked through everything to get updates, 'cause it's easy to give people assignments and then forget about them in the day-to-day whirlwind. So then, we created the big spreadsheet that tracks everything, and going back, rather than walking through, unless, I don't, unless Mayor and Council wants to look at that massive spreadsheet tonight, which I really hope you don't, I have, and it is in the packet, but there are seven key priority areas, if you look in the Zucker Systems study, that they talk about and they focus on in their executive summary. These are the key priority areas presented, and I'm just gonna touch on each one in the high-level items. Customer service was a big issue. You know, they mentioned the perception of some dichotomies between an us-and-them mentality, that the department needed to really review its approach to customer service, and there are opinions all around on that, but, you know, perception becomes reality. So, we sat down and we said, not only for the department, but let's look at the whole city. So, we've just launched a citywide customer service survey, and we're going to be, this is gonna be every single department. So, for instance, the inspection team is gonna email every company that's requested an inspection in the last two, three months, all at once, and ask them to fill out a customer service survey and report on their experiences. We're gonna do the same thing with people that go through the business license process, vendors that deal with our purchasing department, and even people that call in for assistance from economic development. Any way that we touch people that come into the city, that interact with us from a customer service standpoint, we're gonna be offering them the option and requesting that they fill out the survey. So, hopefully, people are hearing that tonight and going to participate. It is up on the city website, and we're gonna be systematically launching, not only hitting out these email distribution lists, but regular practice, and I would say even the folks at the front desk, kudos to the clerk's office, they've already been collecting and keeping track of email addresses. When people come in the front desk, they ask them, can I get your emails so we can follow up with you on this survey? So, people can remain anonymous if they like, or they can give us info and we can follow up. So, we also had a development service motto for customer service, the Development Services Department put together. Actually, out of the department-wide meeting, we held a smaller focus group, one representative from each division, and brainstormed it and talked about what customer service meant to them, and through a series of that, and then we also surveyed the entire department, and they came up with this statement committed to excellence. And while it's not the most exciting, and, you know, I'm sure you can create more punchy taglines, it meant a lot to all the people in the room. And so, their next task, as this subcommittee of the department, is to figure out how then to keep, to develop this as something that everyone in the department thinks about every day, and how to reinforce that on a daily basis. So, I'm tasking them with some significant thought there. And then, we're gonna have some key staff around the department to take some actual customer service training if we receive funding. Wanna send people, you can't assume that someone knows how to interact with customers, you know, if they haven't done it or they haven't been in a position to do that, but they all need it, and so, we wanna make sure that we invest in the people that are gonna be talking to our customers. Timelines. Zucker identified that many of the timelines are within our regional norms, but there is a lack of good computer monitoring and the systems, and in the systems, and some of the timelines, they felt we could actually shorten. What we found, actually, looking at our MUNIS database, is that the database is not set up efficiently. Our data is not being entered efficiently, and therefore, I can't really tell you what our timelines are. I can't tell you with 100% certainty right now what our average second plan review submitter turnaround time is. We are fixing that actively, and it is, it's a big concern for me, because when I look at the team and I see how busy they are, I can tell them all day, I see that you're busy, but that doesn't help me help you. Show me how busy you are. Show me how much more we're producing than other organizations in other cities. And that's also a way that we can look at different gaps in the process along the whole department and try to move things along faster through processes, because I can tell you, they're all working as fast as they can, but sometimes improving processes and tools and resources and data tracking makes all the difference. So, you'll see this repeating throughout the theme here. And on top of that, we wanna look at benchmarking. Once we can really actually know with absolute certainty what our plan review turnaround times are, and any type of interaction turnaround times from A.DZ when they enter the city, then I wanna know what other cities are doing that are actually tracking this, and create some serious goals and benchmarks for us, so that we can state unequivocally that we're one of the most competitive cities, 'cause I believe we are, and if we're not, we're gonna get there. Technology, national best practice. They mentioned moving to the paperless office, where you can submit electronic plans over the internet, and staff can use electronic plan checks. This also harkens to people being able to do things online. We're touting a 24/7 city hall service, but we still can't take business license applications online or allow somebody to check on their permit online. We would very much like to fix that, because it not only streamlines those processes, but then allows people to check on information and have much greater access to data and interact with the city, and it also keeps our data a lot cleaner. So, we're not digging through, you know, right now, if we wanna go back and look at things, we may be digging through boxes for an hour. I don't think we wanna continue to do that. So, I'm excited about this, but again, as I'll get to, it does come with a cost to get things going here. I wanted to show you, just, these are a couple screenshot examples of other organizations that do have some online permitting submittals. So, some places around the country, and I think I found, so Durham, North Carolina, you can plug in an account ID and look at your business licenses online and apply for that and get them turned around. And so, I found one nearby neighbor, Gilbert, you can do all that, and then you can also do some permit submittals online. Department management. Received comments on department management, saying that we need to focus on staff training, mentoring, empowering, setting clear missions and vision, teaching staff how to problem-solve. And so, digging into this myself, in partnership with the director, who works his tail off day in and day out, and I know his staff would attest to that, is, we need to free him up from really doing a lot of line-level staff work that he's having to do because of our staffing issues, right? It's hard to mentor, empower, and do all these things when you really are pulled down in the day-to-day. So, we're looking at ways to do that, but we're also looking at the team-building in the department-wide meetings that I mentioned earlier and discussed, that whole Development Services-wide department meeting, and making sure that, I think in the past, it has been more of a list of items we're checking off, and maybe giving people an update, you know, the whole department, what projects do we have in the queue? I think we need to take a step back in meetings like that, not think about what's in the queue, but let's be a team, and let's talk about larger issues. You know, some of the staff said, I don't really understand some of these new HR policies. I said, well, your department-wide meeting is a great time to do that. And our HR director came, she was very gracious, and just let them throw all kinds of questions at her, and it really helped them in a good forum where they were a group altogether. Cross-department education initiatives. So, you're gonna see things like the Economic Development Department pulling Development Services folks along to maybe different events or programs, or teaching them at least an understanding of why they do things the way they do it, and vice versa. We wanna really, I know Jaclyn Aaron's Cook has been really plugging into and trying to understand what happens at the counter services desk, because they need to work together more, and that was one of the things, as you get into the finite recommendations in the report. And additional staffing needs, as I was getting to, they are strapped really thin. These are just a couple of little photos of things that we did in that department-wide meeting. You know, we asked everybody about observations. We asked them, what if implemented in this report would help them be the most successful? And we were writing things up as we were going. They talked about tools, technology, staff, and training funds. And so, again, I'm taking this straight from the report, but then also verifying that with the team, and these are some things we talked about in team-building in the unified groups. I just wanna share, that was kind of a fun event. The management of the Building Division. There were quite a few comments about the morale in that department and a need for more employee empowerment with management issues, and also looking at the building official certification. We have certified building officials in the department, but our chief building official is not. He's going to complete that by June. That's our goal, again, looking at the funding request tonight. We have additional plans for cross-training, and this is when the, within the Development Services Division. They're doing ad hoc training opportunities in the department now, on a day-to-day basis, training each other, and they're actually reporting that out. So, these aren't just things that they're saying, and these were discussions I had with the department director and all the managers. It's great, you can tell me all day, well, we're doing this, we're doing that. I would like you to report out what you're doing, and then I'd like you to go back in a few months and ask your team if it's actually helped, because there's no point in doing something if you can't verify and find out if it helped. And if it didn't help, you need to stop and rethink your strategy.[1593.76] And if it didn't help, you need to stop and rethink your strategy. So at least that's the way I'm, I'm operating with this. And again, weekly team meetings in the building division have kicked off and, and what they're doing now and one, one feedback point we got from the staff in that division was that they weren't, some of the management, the things that were going on with management or leadership or council level weren't trickling down to them. So they're now reporting that out inside those meetings and even mentioning things that are in the city manager's weekly report. There's a wealth of information there, but staff needs to be almost encouraged and sometimes even forced a little bit to read it and know what's going on. So very good. So the capital improvement program, they mentioned this item as a big item. We need some clarification and focus within the department for the CIP. Really it's, it's so important and it's been not brought to the forefront as, as they think it should be in, in a community like ours. And the administrative costs we found for capital projects have not traditionally in Maricopa been in the capital improvement budgets. So if you need staffing levels to do a project that's in a capital, we're paying that out of operating. Doesn't make a lot of sense because those are associated with that project. So you're actually going to see when we come before council for the zoning code, we, we're going to actually look to roll in those administrative costs into that project because you wouldn't need those administrative, you wouldn't need to spend that staff dollar if you weren't going to do that project. So it gets the money in the right place and attributed to the right projects, but another issue we have is tracking. Right now, how do we track the hours? We don't have any kind of system in place to track any of our staff hours and make sure that they're going to the right funds. So this is, this is another big issue with our MUNIS database system. And then what we're going to do next year is take the department operating budget and just split it off as a separate division in 1314 and then include these administrative costs as we plan the whole CIP. So every project that you see us planning in the proposed CIP next year is going to include administrative costs as a, as a just standard operating procedure. And then last but not least, planning. Clearly we need to revise the zoning ordinance. The good thing is we are well on our way and I believe we're going to be in front of council hopefully next meeting with, with a contract for consideration to get this going. The general plan then in short succession needs to be updated and what we're operating under is we have had two planners working very hard just to get our application reviews through every day on a daily basis. You know, the, the daily grind, pumping all this stuff out and it makes me very nervous as I see things start ticking up and I see us getting a little busier and a little busier. They've always, they've been busy during the downturn. Now saving grace is we've hired an interim planning and zoning administrator. We have Dana on board who's helping us with kicking off the zoning code plan and doing some other things, but our recommendation in the budget next year is going to be to make that a full-time staff position that would be recruited in next fiscal year and continue on an interim basis right now. It's been a lifesaver and it, and it's, and it's, they're still strapped thin. There's certainly no shortage of things to do. And the great thing about this is as I mentioned before, for the development services director, helping free him up from the duties of being the zoning administrator because he, he serves so many hats, he wears so many hats and serves so many roles right now that it's, it's very hard to take the step back in the leadership position that, that, you know, he, he know, he's very experienced and skilled at when you're doing a lot of day-to-day. So getting the right staff on board to handle that for him will be, I think, I believe it's going to make a significant impact. So completed to date, this is a long list, this is just an example list, but you know, we've done, I've done, I've sat down with the development services and the building safety official one-on-one and discussed with them through an evaluation process. We are still following the city's newly adopted performance appraisal process, but this is a one-on-one with myself and them to discuss goals about the implementation plan, goals for them personally and what we want to see. And we're going to do another review in a few months to kind of see where they're at and, and make sure that we're on target. Modifications to the staff-wide meetings. They've improved handouts, enhanced the website for delivery. Now the staff and development services can actually, you know, post things to the website themselves much easier than they could before. We created performance metrics and this was a citywide process. Performance metrics and anybody on staff here will look at me and just with big eyes because they are much more extensive than they've ever been and that's actually how we identified, wow, we can't pull these reports without doing it by hand. And that's when I was talking about, you know, our turnaround times because we need to set up our systems properly. We've adopted the 2012 building codes. This is actually a recommendation in the report. 410 work schedules was something that we found out through the Zucker, Zucker review that they came back and told us, you know, some of your staff are saying that they'd like to be on 410s as well, some of, some of the departments and divisions that we didn't think would be, such as inspections. What I also found out talking to the inspectors is some of them were still on old push-to-talk, push-to-talk phones that weren't smartphones. And they said, well, and I had one inspector tell me, well, I go out in the field and I take a picture with my personal cellphone and then I email it to myself so I can have a picture of the inspector. What? So we have, we've, in a very, very simple, quick way, we've put them on allowances so it allows them to have smartphones and be much more streamlined and some of the recommendations in the future, again, depending on budget, because I know we're going to have a, you know, budgets are always tight, but looking at opportunities in different ways from a technology standpoint that we can allow them to review and approve inspections in the field so that they've got a three-hour inspection turnaround time rather than a minimum of 24 hours by the time it comes in, gets processed and they get sent out. And then again, we've got the interim P&amp;Z administrator on board working really hard. The focus for the remainder of this current fiscal year, again, should, should council be, should, should council approve this request tonight for funding transfer, we'd be working on this MUNIS system. Right now we're already working on it through existing staff and it's actually temporary staff while we have a vacancy that we're trying to recruit for. In the IT department, they've graciously offered some time to start looking at the database in MUNIS, but what we really need is more time and, and an actual focused individual to get that system completely fixed. It's somewhat of a one-time cost, but it's a significant focus. In May of 13, that's our goal where we would like to launch that customer self-service online portal where people can actually go and do things and interact with development services online rather than right now downloading a PDF form, printing it off, filling it out by hand and then often faxing or hand walking it into the city. It almost feels a little archaic and I, I know we can do better and I'm really excited about how much time that would save staff. I'm just excited that we could actually capture email addresses because they're not mistyped, you know, because you can't ever read anybody's handwriting. So looking at that, that's, that's our, that's our goal for launching that. It does require hardware to do that as well as, as staff time for configuration and training. We're going to revise the fast-track program and double-check all those timeframes and then look at the economic development fast-track program and how that correlates because that's also in the recommendation. We think that's a, an important thing to give attention to this year before things ramp back up. And then staff training and team building, I can't emphasize that enough. And then continuing to execute this customer service survey and report on that quarterly. This is the spreadsheet and I think Mayor and Council have seen this. This is what we would be asking, this is what we are asking for tonight for current fiscal year 1213 for a transfer for funds from contingency into the department and this is what it would do for us. Just kind of letting you know, the interim planning and zoning administrator to continue that, we will include that in the CIP for the zoning code. MUNIS training for staff and that's actual training on the ground where the folks with that database system would come out and train people one-on-one. You know, our code compliance officers never receive formal training on this system and so it's very hard to track. You know, he does visits all the time that don't result in a case, but those aren't being logged or tracked. And so we want to know that he's visiting all kinds of places and checking them out. You know, just because it doesn't ramp up to, to a problem, you know, doesn't mean we don't want to know that the efforts are being done. Server and network needs, so this is hardware. Contract support for the database cleanup and that's essentially our largest item where we need a dedicated IT expert to come in and fix all that for us. Again, this would be a one-time cost for all of that setup, but taking our reports from A to Z and cleaning up the system, we're hoping it would be under that dollar amount, but we'd rather, you know, we'd rather make sure that we're safe. Building official certification, making sure that we can fund the training required to get that done as soon as possible and make sure we satisfy that request in the report. Training funds for staff. And then we put in here additional consultant assistance costs because there are things that have come up and could come up. We may find that we need a little bit more in the training area or a little bit more in the database creation or our estimates on hardware may come in a little bit off and we don't want to have to come back before you and, and, and make you consider this again unless, you know, so we don't want to be that grossly off. So that is the request tonight. Anticipated requests for 1314, there are some personnel positions that we would be looking for as we start drafting that budget and putting it together. We'd be looking at equipment as again, I kind of alluded to that. There's some equipment related that I haven't mentioned before is related to our street sign inventory. We don't have any kind of inventory right now about what's going on in street signs in the city and it could create a, a liability for us in the future. And then one other big thing that we need that we would like to look at are services from a filing consultant because again, if you can imagine how the database is, just imagine how the files are, when you've got folks just struggling to keep up with the day-to-day, we, we need to focus some attention on getting all those files cleaned up. And they did recommend a filing consultant and we'd like to look into that, identify what those costs would be and then consider it in the budget plan. And how are we going to measure success? Because to me that's very important. I don't like to ever ask you for anything and then just go, don't worry about it, we're, we're fine, it's going to be good. We're going to continually review and report and you're going to see quarterly written updates on the deliverables and the implementation plan. We can attach those to the city manager's report or come before council should you request. Performance metrics and timeline reports for review turnaround. Once we get this database cleaned up, then we'll actually be able to show you in real time where we're at on those review times. The survey data, improved tools and the improved tools are going to be important because that's, that's key to our development community. If they have tools that they can use such as the zoning code that is easy to read and turnkey and makes sense for development, that's going to help us grow the community. And then finally, staff feedback and employee morale. We're going to be asking staff if these things are helping not only their working conditions but their productivity. And with that, Mayor and Council, I've talked a lot. Like to hear any questions that you do have.
Council members, do you have questions, comments, concerns? Councilman Brown.
Danielle, a couple of questions. The administrator, P&amp;Z administrator, will this be a certified planner?
Good question, Mr. Mayor. Council member, we would like this recruitment to be ASCP certified, yes. When, when we bring in the, the full-time staff, absolutely.
When you break up the development service department to two divisions, what additional costs will prove from that?
Mr. Mayor, Council member, that's a great question as well. We're looking at that for a timeframe because of budgetary challenges we know we're going to have and we know what our capacity and needs are now and, and city manager and I had strong, long discussions about this and we are looking to recommend that in the 1415, so about 18 months from now. And, and the additional cost would be the cost of that staff person plus benefits which can, you know, it's going to be a high-level position.
Other questions? Concerns, comments? You know, I've thought a lot about this agenda item, you know, since we've been looking at it, it's been on the agenda and, you know, I, I've tried to reason and rationalize back and forth, the, the money being spent and, you know, I'm, I'm not one to like to throw money at anything just lightly, I like to really review it. I do appreciate the, the fact that, you know, we've talked heavily about benchmarks and, you know, reporting and cleaning things up. I'm a big proponent of efficiency and technology and I know that in order to clean some of this up, especially having done this audit with 121 recommendations and we have a long way to go, but at, at the same time, you got to start somewhere. And I think that we're at the point that if we can take these benchmarks that you have, that you have talked about and we can put this into play, I mean, just, just for the public's information, the vice mayor who's not here tonight spoke at our strategic planning retreat and he was at a meeting speaking to a variety of different builders, home builders and, and commercial developers. And one of the things they were saying is that Maricopa is very high on the list for, you know, potential development. And I think that if, if we want to be in the forefront to compete against these other cities, Gilbert, I know that in, in, you know, my time around the city, that this has been an area in which there's been a lot of frustration at. I certainly would like to see that we throw a little money at this, you know, in, in the appropriate measure to clean these things up, make this more streamlined and position us in such a fashion that it makes it, the, the interaction between the city, i.e. the development services department and, and the small businesses and large businesses that are, and developers that are looking to locate here, make it easier for them to do business here because I think that's the purpose of, of our job is to make it easy to do business in the city of Maricopa. So I, I, I think that I'm in, in agreeance with this and would like to see a motion on it.
I'd just like to make a comment. In layoffs of 2009, there was about seven layoffs and four of those layoffs came from that department. So it's time, like you said, like the vice mayor had said, it's time to rev up that department and get ready for the, for the boom. All right, with that said, I'd like to approve agenda item, like to motion to approve agenda item 10.6.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the final item on the agenda is 10.7. The city council shall discuss and possibly take action on selecting a method and process by which to fill the vacancy on the city council. Brenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Wanted to just give you an update. At the last council meeting, you had directed us to open the application process beginning the following day, close it tonight at 5:00. So I thought I'd give you an update on things and also seek some direction from you as to how you want to continue. So starting off with, as of 5:00 today, we did receive 17 applications for the vacant council seat. So I think this is a big, kudos to our community for people, 17 people willing to step up and serve. I think that's really awesome. And we did want to point out that candidate number six on the list does not meet the one-year residency requirement until November 23, 2012. So we just want to make sure that that was on the record so that if council were to appoint this position prior to that date, then that particular candidate would not be eligible if the appointment occurred post-November 23, they would be eligible. Other than that, all the other candidates have submitted complete applications and they are, have all been validated as eligible to serve in the role of council. So 17 candidates is a lot however, so there's some, three basic questions that wanted to pose to you tonight to help frame your discussion on how to move forward. The first question is, does council want to reduce the pool of candidates before you start the interview process? And I'm going to get into each of these in a second. The second is what questions do you want to ask of, of the applicants who you do interview and how do you want to go about doing that process? So the first question is, do you want to reduce the pool? If not, you're interviewing 17 applicants at roughly 20 to 30 minutes apiece and you can understand that that'd be very cumbersome and create a pretty long special council meeting to do that. Might even need to break it up into a couple of days, but that's something that you would have to consider and we're seeking that direction this evening. If you do want to reduce the pool, couple suggestions that you might want to consider is that each council member reviews the applications and sends their top two choices in that order ranking them to the mayor. And then if we have, we assume there'd be some crossover that maybe one person would be on more than one person's list, we wouldn't end up with 12, but if we did, say, we had 12 different people being brought forward, then maybe the mayor could just say, we're going to pick everyone's number one choice and that is who we would interview. Because you really want to, I think, keep it to about five to six, kind of like a job interview. You want to try to scale it down and keep it to a manageable number if you were to reduce the pool. The other question that we had for you to talk about tonight was what do you want to ask these applicants? It is suggested that you email your questions, that you think about it as council and that you email your questions to the mayor ahead of time and that we vet them to make sure they're legal because we want to make sure we're asking appropriate questions. And then we want to make sure we create a template so that everyone is asked the same exact questions for fairness. And so what we would do is if the questions were emailed to the mayor, then the mayor and I could work together to create a template, get the city attorney, HR to kind of look at it from their perspectives, make sure the questions are good. And then we would get that template out to all of you for the interview process. And similar to an oral board, you guys can just take turns running down, you take question one, two, three and so on, just rotate till you get through the questions. The third topic of discussion for this evening is how do you want to go about conducting the interviews? Suggestion would be to hold a special meeting here in this facility. There was asked questions whether we would hold it at another facility for transparency, which allows us to record and broadcast. Staff would recommend that we hold them here. If you move locations, you can't broadcast it, we can't record it as well, and so that could be perceived as a less transparent process. The other thing that we would recommend is the council ask the questions in the oral board panel where, versus just shooting from the hip and, and firing questions. And then following the interviews, the council would retreat into each session, discuss with the attorney what they need to discuss about the process and then at that meeting, select and appoint a council member. And we even recommend that, why not swear them into office right then and there so they could hit the ground running? We're getting ready to go into the busy season and things, so that's an option for you as well. So just wanted to put the three questions back up there and turn it over to you to have at it and ask any questions of me that you like and to, to discuss and give direction.
Thank you, and we have, we have a lot to get to here, but we also have a speaker card, so let's move to the speaker card and then we'll come back to questions from council. John Beatty?
I'll keep it very short, I'm one of the names on that list. As I was filling out the forms and getting the process ready, I was thinking, well, if I had run for this office, I wouldn't have to be doing all this paperwork and everything that, you know, sending my resume, you know, getting references.
Do some paperwork.
Yeah. Still be doing paperwork.
Just ask Vanessa.
And so I was, you know, I, and then when I went to do it, I couldn't do it online just like Danielle was saying, I had to print it out and then hand-deliver it. So these are just some thoughts that I had when you're thinking of this method. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, move on to these questions and start opening the discussion on how to do this.
Mayor, out of curiosity, Mr. John had the opportunity to, for us to see him. I know there's other members in, in the audience. I don't know how you'd like to approach this, but I mean, would any of them would like to speak or at least make yourself known that you're here? You're taking vested interest in being here tonight?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do this. If you want to, let's, let's do it orderly here. Let's have you come up to the podium if you'd like to be recognized quickly, just say your name and we'll just kind of go through all of them that are here because we have a lot to get to.
Mayor and council, my name is Lee Filas, I'm the number six guy. So, you know, my job is pretty much to serve and if you want to give me this opportunity, I look forward to serving, so that's me.
Thank you, Lee.
Mayor and council members, my name is William Wright. My comment would be the question about reducing the pool in choosing the people that you're familiar with. It might be a different kind of advantage. I might not know most of you and I might know certain people and I don't know that that would give the best reduction of the pool. So that would be my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Phyllis Von Fleckinger. I was on the first elected city council. My name is up there almost at the end, always. My name is up there almost at the end, always. I just had a question, will you be waiting through all of this paperwork we filled out to select your top two candidates?
Yes, in fact, we have received them as they've come in and I can't speak for the rest of the council members, but I, with the minus of the last 10 minutes before this meeting started, I was going through every one of them. So, I have almost completed that, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, my name is Ted Yocum. My name is misspelled, unfortunately, it's Y-O-C-U-M.
He's a busy man.
I've tried as best as I could since I took the Leadership Academy to pay back to the city of Maricopa because the time, the money, the effort that was invested in me at that time, I just felt that I wanted to be of service to the city and I want to continue that service if it's your wish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, my name is Rachel Lefal. I'm number nine on the list. I've been a resident here in Maricopa since December 2009. I hit the ground running when I moved to the city and I'm ready to continue that with consideration for mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and city council, I am number two on the list, so maybe that helps me, I don't know. It's alphabetical, so they'll write. I appreciate the opportunity as well to submit my name, to serve on the board, to serve with council. I think it's important that as citizens, we fulfill our civic duty and provide service to our citizens. And I look forward to working with you and ensuring that indeed we live up to our city's creed of a prosperous future and a proud past. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Jay Shaver, number 13, not exactly the luckiest number, but I look forward to the interview and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Jay.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Linda Huggins, number eight, and I am here because I want to continue to see Maricopa grow and become friendly to everybody. That's my tagline.
Thanks, Linda.
Good evening, mayor and council members, Peg Chapados. First, I want to congratulate council on the selection and the process for the application. I think you guys did an outstanding job. I appreciated the tough questions and some of the point blank questions about time commitment, energy, diversity, all that kind of stuff. You've seen me for the past six years at just about everything that the city does, so I would be honored if I was selected to fill that empty seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Council, turn it back over to you and Brenda's here to answer questions. So, what are your thoughts on reducing the pool of candidates? Let's start there.
I would not want to reduce it down to six, I think in fairness, I think gentlemen made a point. Some of these candidates are well-known. I don't think we should foreclose on those, might not be as well-known, so I would like to at least have 10 considered.
Okay, some idea for 10?
I like the idea of us choosing our top two, submitting them to you, and then obviously there's going to be duplicates, you could pick the same person I would pick, so we might not be able to get to 10 that way. So, how would we determine, my question is, I guess, for Councilmember Brown, how would we determine, let's say we're at seven, the additional three?
I think we should at least have a pool, 10.
I 100% agree with you.
Six.
Okay, so I guess the question would be, would you raise the number of submittals to three? Each person submit their top three and therefore it takes us to, I mean, but then there's the potential that you end up with 11 or 12. I mean, how do you want to work on that? Or you do two and you end up with seven and then we have three more that we need to fill. How do you go about suggesting that we do that?
I'm comfortable with two because I think if we do our due diligence behind the scenes, contacting the candidates, betting a little bit on our own, as will reference checks and so forth, we could probably get down to our top two if we're willing to take that time on, you know, behind the scenes on the back end. I'm willing to do that, so are the council's members are, so.
Okay. Councilwoman?
I'll tell member Brown, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were selecting city manager, how many choices did we have?
Originally?
Originally.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five we had originally that the consultant had brought. But we narrowed it down to individual, three from individuals, and then we came up with a large pool. So, I think a number for us to each select three individuals that, and there was a big crossover too when we did that selection process, but three is a nicer pool than two. I think you narrow it down too closely and too small if you just picked two individuals from each council member.
If we each picked three, there's only 17 candidates. So, let's say we all picked three different ones, well, one person wouldn't be able to pick three different ones, you know what I mean? We only have 17. I'm sticking with two.
Ah, the semantics of this. Well, this is what we've got to figure out. I mean, because, I mean, everybody in this audience and everyone in this town is counting on us to work out these bugs, so.
You could potentially end up with 10 picking two.
Right, you could.
But that wasn't the case.
No.
No, that wasn't the case.
No.
When you did it with the city manager?
Yeah, it was just.
So, when you went down from each picking your top three from 25, what did you end up with on that first cut?
I'm going to say about 12 or 13.
So, it was almost in half.
Right.
So, theoretically then, if we stick with the law of numbers here, then we're going to reach 15, 16, somewhere, I mean, 15, sorry, 17 applicants, so, you know, what's that, seven, eight, nine, somewhere in there?
But I'm just thinking that it gives an opportunity to those that aren't well-known, those individuals that we're all going to be considering, and when I look into this, it's not who you know, but what you know. That's what I'm going with this in mind. And I know a lot of these individuals on these lists, I know them or of them, but at the same time, we owe it to all the other individuals that I don't know to make sure that they're considered. And you just make that pool just bigger and.
That's my point, that's my point exactly. Because you can't use the same criteria we use for selecting city council because every candidate we were given had previous city manager experience. So, none of them were novice or didn't have experience. This is case narrowing down to three and finally making a selection which happened to be Brenda Fisher.
Let's go to Councilmember Campbell and over to Potter.
So, let's, I'll stick with the three with the potential that certain council members don't submit three because there might not be three going through all these applications that I would want to serve with. You know, I would want two, two people that I would consider to have a council seat. So, there's a potential for people, council members and you, not to turn in three, so I would go with three, but we don't absolutely have to turn in three.
Okay, so three being the max.
Up to three.
Up to three.
I'll support that.
Okay. Councilman Potter, you had something to say?
No, it sounds fair to me.
Okay, so, what I heard on that question is, council wants to reduce the pool by reviewing the applications and submitting to the mayor your top three, up to three of your top choices. And then that would be the pool. And if it's larger, then I guess we'll cross that bridge. If it's larger than 10 or whatever, we'll cross the bridge. Okay, second question. And that one, it was suggested that you email questions ahead of time to the mayor that you would want to ask so we can create a template.
Brenda, the question I have with this is that you and I had discussed in passing, you know, you have it on here about the legality and HR appropriateness. You know, how are we to do that in the respect that it's, one thing to everyone to submit a question based on what we find in this, you know, giant packet of stuff, but it's another to kind of feed off things and know, I mean, is there some sort of training that council should be given in, you know, what are appropriate questions to ask, et cetera?
Well, we can certainly put you through training if you want to take the time. I think it would be in the interest of time and in fairness, Dennis and I kind of whispered a little bit about this earlier, that it would be more appropriate that everybody is asked the same questions because then you get into other concerns. And I don't know what level of knowledge each of you have in hiring procedures and I would certainly not want to have a situation where you either ask something that could be potentially embarrassing to the council or the candidate or something like that or that we're jumping in. So, I just thought it was a cleaner way to do it. If, think of the questions you'd want to ask as you're looking at your top three, email those to you and then we'll create a template so that everyone is asking the same questions. The other thing is, is that the benefit of that is, let's say I was asking a tougher question, you know, if I was a council member, then the person at the dais that's who's being interviewed doesn't really know who submitted that question because that gives them a little bit, you know, because it's just a rotating basis, so they don't feel like they're being targeted by a particular council member or something. It just creates a little bit more anonymous anonymity to the questions.
Okay, council, what are your thoughts on that?
I was in an interview process where one of our interviewee asked the interviewer, did I have that right, if she had any children. Now, we didn't think anything of it at the time. We came back and it came to bite us. Anyways, if we ran all the questions through our attorney, he should be able to clear which ones are okay to ask, which ones aren't. So, if we selected one question each, that would give us six questions, I mean, that would be, and run them through our attorney first before we ask the questions, and they'll be scripted so that no one changes the question in between and the same question is asked of all the individuals.
You might want to increase that to two, I mean, six questions, you know, maybe two questions per council member. I mean, you wouldn't have to necessarily be limited on that either, that's up to council to do.
It's probably a good idea to have at least, at least a couple of questions submitted by each council member so that if one of them is bad, we can take those off and narrow that down. You know, not a bad question, just doesn't meet appropriate standards, come on. So, okay.
Going back to the city manager, we were scripted some questions, I believe they were by you, Dennis? We were scripted some questions and we got to pick, we were given the list of, I don't want to say about 30 questions, and out of the 30 questions, each individual council member got to choose which question they wanted to ask of the candidates.
Right, I think that was probably provided by the council.
Oh, okay.
Something we probably want to, I mean, if it's our pick of a council member, again, to represent the city, we probably want to keep that to us, don't you think? I mean, the code says that it's to the council that appoints, so we probably want to stick to the council coming up with the questions rather than going outside of that. Okay? So, is that, does that sound good to each of us to submit two questions and we'll kind of see what boils out of that?
You can do two or you can follow suit and do up to three.
Up to three.
You can do, follow the same kind of thing.
Why you got to get complicated?
I know, jumping on your bandwagon, council member.
If they don't want to ask them any questions, they have the option.
Okay, let's just make it simple, up to three and submit what you want, but up to three. Okay, so up to three questions.
Okey dokey. So, I hear we're going to have them email those to the mayor and then the mayor and I will work together to create a template and work with legal and do our magic. Okay, last question, how do you want to conduct the interviews? Do you want to hold a special meeting here at MUSD? Do you want to have it as just an add-on to a regular council meeting? Do you want it at MUSD for the transparency and recording ability? Do you want it off-site? So, that's the questions we.
Well, you know, when we originally started this process here a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that I think is really important is that it is recorded and broadcast and obviously through MUSD has the technology to do that here. I don't want it to be part of a typical agenda. I mean, you know how these things last, the E-sessions and everything else. So, I want the time to be given to these candidates. However, that being said, I am concerned that if, you know, I would like this to be very open for the public, yet at the same time, I don't necessarily want those candidates who are on the docket to be interviewed. I don't want them sitting in the back of the audience necessarily listening in to candidate responses of the other one. So, I guess my question is for Ruben as well as for you and how you see that we can make this happen in a legal, open forum, yet keeping this to where it's transparent and yet the other candidates are not listening to those answers.
You could, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you could do that as a kind of a panel of the finalists. You could have them perhaps sit in the front row and they could draw numbers for who goes first on each question so that it kind of rotates so that they're all answering the questions. Instead, in other words, instead of taking candidate A from question one through 10 and then letting them go and candidate B from one to 10, then you could just say candidate A and they get to each come up and give their answer and then by rotating it, there's not an advantage to any one candidate by going first or last.
Councilmember?
It's kind of like the, when we ran for office, the forums where one person goes first one time and last the next time, so I would support that.
Interesting.
Does Ruben have some idea?
He likes that idea, it's easy. Okay, so, I mean, we, then we're moving towards a panelist, you know, all of them sitting in the front row. Each question is different, correct, that they're asked, but it circles around so that they're all asked the same question at the end of the.
For example, it'd be, okay, let's just say, why do you want this position? Why, you know, they've asked that on the essay question, you might want to have them orally state that versus just in there written. So, you might say, okay, the first question for the panel is, why do you want to be on the city council? And you go down the row and you can just hand them a mic and go down the row versus making them get up, you know, for semantics and then they all answer the question. And then the second question is, well, why would you be the perfect choice for this position? And then you start at the other end and you, you know, just rotate that way. So, the question is rotated through the entire group and then you just keep making each person go first a different time.
Go ahead, councilman, go ahead.
So, what I would think is that they would like, if you had them in a row or what, you wouldn't go one through 10 and then one through 10 this way because then one person's going first multiple times. It's not fair because the guy that's in the middle's or girl that's in the middle's going fifth.
She goes first on question one, he goes first on question two, question three, question four, and you just keep rotating it.
Yeah, I don't know. But 10 people, that's a lot. So, the person that's sitting on that end is going to have everybody's answer by the time. I guess what the mayor and I are concerned with is that it's not a candid response because they've listened to the responses from nine other individuals, you know?
And I got to tell you that from the ease of administration, that makes perfect sense, yet however, what I think that we're all looking for is we're looking for the overall general opinion of what that candidate is and as a whole, rather than having to remember where the answer was that they came back to. I mean, I guess it's kind of a general feeling of where they stand in that moment through all the series of questions. You know, that's kind of, that's kind of the hearing confirmation grilling, right? I mean, you get it and there's, do you get frustrated, do you not? Did you hear the same answer someone else, did you not? I mean, it's really a solo individual thing and I think that, I'm a little more key to that. I'd like to see us where we answer all those questions with one person at a time. And that's just my thoughts because I think I'm looking for the big picture of the way they react and the way they are with all of the questions, all at once, so that I can have a general concept and feel for who they are all at once. And then I can take that and I can say, okay, now that case is closed and I section that off and here comes candidate two. And we do the same thing with candidate two. Thoughts?
I agree. It's more deliberate.
Would it be possible to have them in the back room? Because I know the front, there's the television, so I don't know if you turn that off or it helps or not, but, you know, just with the internet, but somehow where they're isolated from the questioning and not aware of what's going on.
We could certainly do that, put them in the E-session room.
Put them in the quiet room.
Yep, there, yeah.
A soundproof room like a game show?
Yeah, like the green room.
Exactly, yeah.
There's no floating cash in that room.
And the password is.
That's much more what I prefer.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, yeah, we want to sequester them to that extent and keep them here unless we decide further from that. So, that being said, as we go through these interviews, how is council going to go through and start to narrow it down? Is it going to be a further, obviously there has to be a further narrowing process, selection process. You know, we're very limited in what we could do in an E-session, so it is going to be out there and open. How do we want to, how do we want to deal with this? And that leads into the next one, which is, do we swear them in there? Do we keep everybody here and swear them in there? How do you want to go about this? Councilmember?
Well, for the sake of Lee, who applied, if we appoint him there at that particular meeting, then he's automatically out. His application would be removed unless we decide to do it after November 23rd. So, I would say we may want to potentially set a date, maybe when you guys select him as your top two, you know? And so, and if he's out because we set a date now, then he's out regardless, so that's probably something we should discuss.
Can we be flexible in that, though? I mean, can we say, you know, based on that particular candidate, if he was selected that, you know, he'd be sworn in on the 23rd versus right afterwards?
I guess we could.
I mean, does that, does that take away from being universally fair? I mean, if the other, if another candidate is selected, they're good to go right then and there, right? So, all it does is.
So, we just put the provision in there that if he is selected, we would do it on November 23rd. If it's another candidate that's selected, we would do it at that meeting.
At that meeting, yeah.
Cool, no problem.
I mean, that's, that doesn't hinder any other candidate, the only one that hinders is him and the council at that point. But we under no code advisory that we have to have somebody put in within 30 days, so really that doesn't become an issue.
That's right.
Okay, so we're okay with that one provision. Other than that, then we're good with swearing him in right there. So, I guess again, it boils down to, what is the next step? How are we going to further, further narrow this down? I mean, that's, this is where it gets into the nitty gritty of it. Do we do, I mean, Casa Grande will do where they vote on everybody, I'm not sure that's always the best option, you know, I mean, do we then select another top one and go that way out? How do we do that?
Yeah, I believe you could do, and I'm looking at the clerk, because I've done
I mean, do we, do we then select another top one and go that route? How do we do that?
I believe you could do, and I'm looking at the clerk, because I've done this in two other states where you could do a ballot where you can't, here, where they write it down and then they hand it to her.
It needs to be a public vote.
Well, it would be a public vote. They're not allowed to do a ballot here like that in Arizona.
You know, you mean where the ballots can get released later?
Right, they write it down and then hand it to the clerk and she reads it.
But public's entitled to know who voted for who.
Right, at the end of it. But I, okay, so maybe that wouldn't work. Never mind.
All right, and this is exactly the reason for this conversation because you never know where it falls in open meeting law to do it, to do it fairly and legally, so.
Are we allowed to go into e-session to discuss, to narrow it down, discuss?
If there's, if an issue comes up legally, that you need legal advice about something, then we can go into e-session. But you can't go into e-session to go back there and say, I like candidate X because she does this, this, and that. I don't like candidate B. I think we should go X, Y, and Z. And then you guys come out and say our top three candidates are X, Y, and Z. Completely illegal. I mean, you, that discussion has to occur in an open session. If legal questions arise about the process, about somebody's ability to serve, then I'd have to look into that because that might be a reason to go into an executive session. But you can't go back in an executive session to debate the merits of the candidates. There's no, there's no provision under the executive session statute that allows us to do that.
Did you do that on the city manager recruitment?
That's a personnel policy.
Personnel, okay.
Employees. So that's the.
Dennis, with 10 candidates, there's, and there's going to be six of us sitting up here. That's a lot of discussion about particular people that'll be sitting in the audience that have just been interviewed. And we're going to have public comment about those said individuals that could be potentially bad, I think.
And Mayor, Councilmember Kimball, nobody said this is a pleasant process.[1265.73][1265.73](Laughter) I've been through a few of these. It's not pleasant. It's not pleasant for the candidates and it's not pleasant for the council. But it's, it's an open process and a process that, that needs to be open and remain open. A lot of times, after you're done interviewing the candidates, some cities like to come back, take nominations. They ask, some cities require a second to the nominations, and then they vote. And maybe during the first vote, only three candidates get two votes apiece. Then you go, then the council has more discussion and then you go to another vote. But at least by that time, you've gone from maybe eight or nine candidates down to three. And then you have three that all got two votes.
Okay, well, that was my question then. I know, I know Casa Grande does it that way or somewhat similar. But, but the issue that I never really resolved with Mayor Jackson was, is it, so when you're, when you're doing that and everyone's going along saying, okay, here's candidate X. Candidate X, do you support him? No. Candidate X, do you support him? No. Yes, yes, no. So we have two. So two is sufficient then for them to move on to the second category. Or does it need to be three? And if so, it's not, it's not nominating them for the position, it's nominating them to advance to the next round. Is that correct?
Well, and that's, and Mr. Mayor, that, a lot of times, you'll want to do that early on and say, during the first round, you can nominate and, and second so many candidates so that you have so many there. I mean, so you have so, you know, that have been nominated and seconded. But then you'll vote on them all together. I mean, if, let's say we have, you know, five candidates and you vote on them and only three of them get two votes apiece, those three will move up and then you're going to talk some more about those. And then when you feel comfortable to take another vote, clearly somebody's going to have to switch ballots after a while or switch who they're supporting.
Well, I guess, I guess that question then becomes is what we need to decide is, is two votes sufficient to move on to the, to the second round or, you know, the second vote as we narrow it down after the interviews? Or is three? I mean, where does that become? I mean, there's going to be theoretically six of us. So there's also potential for ties.
How many rounds are we going to have?
Right. I mean, I guess, I don't, we're not assigning the two votes to each council member and that's all you get, but rather on each person that comes up, so of the 10 that are selected, we each vote on them. How many votes does it take for, for the council to have them move on?
And Mr. Mayor, you might have to think that, I mean, you might have a candidate that comes to everybody's top and in the first ballot, you get four votes in the matter's resolve. And so that's another way to go too, is through the voting, I mean, don't, I mean, just take an initial vote and figure out what you have when it comes to the candidates at that time or, you know, after all the interviews have been completed.
Okay. But it still, it still leaves us with the discussion of how do we move out of the, how do we move past the, the first narrowing down process after the interview and narrow it down? I mean, like you said, if it's four, great, then, then off we go. We're done. But if not, what, how many votes allows them to move on to the second qualifier list?
How many rounds are we talking about having?
Amazing.
What are we going to narrow it down to? I guess my question would be, what do we want to narrow it down to?
This is making me think this is a paddle vote or something, you know?
Well, how many do we want to narrow it down to for the second round?
Okay, well.
I mean, because technically I'm only going to have two or three choices to begin with. I mean, and then given the interview, maybe I'll change my mind, but.
Right. Well, okay, so maybe, maybe that's the way we, all right, so what are we thinking? Two, two, three?
Maybe if I can maybe throw something out there. You know, if you're starting off with roughly 10, depending on how many come out of the top three list, is that maybe you on the record say, who are your top two? And kind of go down and see if there's some overlap on the top two. And, and then from there, I'm looking at Dennis to make sure it's legal, and then from there, you, if you guys agree on like that's the top two, maybe you have some follow-up questions or maybe you have them come up and, you know, say something or you deliberate further and then make a decision from there.
Okay.
I like that.
I like that, too.
I think once the interviews start, I mean, that's going to.
Help, yeah.
Very helpful.
Absolutely. I agree. So, okay, so after this, then, after the interviews, we'll each say who our top two are and see where we stand and see where the alignment is and further discussion and then cut off that, those that aren't in that, in that realm. And then we'll have potentially further questions or, you know, further interview there. Okay?
One other point, Mayor, I would recommend for the order of the interviews that you just pull, we pull randomly from the hat.
Randomly, absolutely.
To ensure that there's some fairness in the order of interviews.
Absolutely. So again, just to be clear, it's open to the public, but yet the, the members of, that are, that are the interviewees will not be allowed in the room at the time that someone else is being interviewed. Okay? We'll go with that?
So we will work to set up a special meeting at this location and we'll, as you mentioned, put them in the back room and ask, one person will be on the hot seat, if you will, for the entire questioning process, and then they can return to the green room. And then you will, after doing that, if there's not one clear choice, then you will seek a top two choice from the group, come up with a list and then interview the top two and, or have them come up again.
Councilmember?
I would say that after they do their interview, they'd be allowed to sit in the audience.
Oh, okay.
As opposed to going back to the room.
If they choose.
You want them out in the audience?
Okay.
All right, got it.
Go back there and give all the answers, you know?[1615.12][1615.12](Laughter)
Let's do the disadvantage, though.
Maybe they're in another room. Where about that one?[1622.23][1622.23](Laughter) Another question.
Just really quick. So if the, if, I understand, Councilmember Brown, you wanted to whittle it from 17 to about 10. Is that, is that what I understand? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I'd really be fair to recommend just to foreclose on six people.
Okay. So my, I guess my question then would be, we're just going to be notified, this is the day, this is the time. Is that what I'm saying? If we're going to whittle it down to this scenario, then we'll get a call and email, something like, of that nature? Is that what we're doing?
Councilmember?
So wouldn't everyone be notified if, to be invited at the special meeting if there are candidates to be interviewed?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I would imagine it's just like when, when we ran and there was a question had by one of us, all of us were notified, all the candidates were notified, correct? And so if, if there's any notification that goes out to one, it should go out to all. So any, any notification of you've been selected or not to show up at this time will go to all. So that way, again, very, very open and transparent for everybody.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, excellent question. Mr. Baylen, we appreciate that. One thing that we will not do is check 17 people's calendars for availability.
Absolutely.
Because otherwise, I think we might be looking at 2015 before we can pick a date that works for everybody. So we will, as staff, work with our council and our legal and clerk's office to set a date and then we will be sure to notify everybody of the date. It's possible we will set the date before we know what the narrowing, what the top seven, 10, whatever the number ends up being, is. So it would be a series of communications from the city, probably from our city clerk that says, this is the date and time. Please reserve this in case you're selected. As soon as we know what that selection is, that we hear from the mayor who was the recipient, then we would email it, everybody and say, these are the ones that were selected. And then those that did not get choice, you're free to come to the meeting because you are a member of the public.
Absolutely. Anything else you can think of that we need to discuss on that matter at this point? I think we are set and rolling in motion. So with that, as that summary has been, has been listed, I don't see any need for any further discussion. I would accept a motion on this, please.
So move.
Have a motion in a second. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Appreciate it.
Please create a direction.
With that here, we will go ahead and move to e-session.
So move.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for, for participating tonight. We really appreciate it.